We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's keep changing the flag?
I don't know. I gotta, I gotta come in and check that.
I know.
Somebody's playing.
All right, roll call, please.
Brown.
Present.
Calhoun.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGirti. Here. Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Okay, moving to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We have one listed. I'll ask first, though, if, does anyone from the commission have anything else? We will move on then to the local officers' compensation commission meeting minutes. A meeting of the Mount Clemens Local Officers' Compensation Commission was held on Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at ten a.m. in the second-floor conference room at the municipal building, One Cracker Boulevard, Mount Clemens, Michigan. The members present were commissioners Kern, Bates-Gazier, Paul Henkel, and Michael Lewick. Also present Kathleen Martin, City Clerk, Kevin Donaldson, Human Resource Director. The meeting was called to order at ten a.m. There was public participation, but there was no public participation. They, the review of mayor and city commission compensation took place. The Local Officers' Compensation Commission reviewed a wage salary of the comparable municipalities to Mount Clemens and discussed the fact that the mayor and city commission received a one-thousand-dollar raise in two thousand twenty-one. The L O C C also noted that they had not received any complaints about the current compensation from the city commission or the mayor, and that there were no comments during the public participation portion of the meeting regarding the officials' compensation. Commissioner Lewick made a motion, supported by Commissioner Henkel, to maintain the current salaries of thirty-five-hundred dollars annually for the position of mayor and twenty-five-hundred dollars annually for the position of city commissioner. The motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Lewick made a motion, supported by Commissioner Henkel, to approve the minutes of December first, two thousand twenty-three, as submitted. The motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Henkel made a motion, supported by Commissioner Lewick, to adjourn the meeting at ten, ten a.m. The motion passed unanimously, and that is respectfully submitted from Kathleen Martin. Is there any questions or comments on the announcements? Okay, we will move on then to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented?
Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yep.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rip.
Yes.
Yor.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting. It's our first opportunity that we allow the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If anyone who, if anyone would like to address the commission at this time, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
Yes, my address is one fifteen South Main Street, Mount Clemens, four eight oh four three. Yes, other states.
Summer, can you give us your full name?
Uh, Summer, Paris Chaffey.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Well, other states actually have apartments for the people who can stay in the, uh, they're stuck out in the street. They can pay fifty dollars a month and pay their utilities. And that's a really good idea to keep them off the streets so they have a bed and they watch TV set and then take a shower. And the church is only, uh, open when it's cold, but not when it's springtime. And that's sad for the other people out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Summer. If there's anyone else who would like to address the commission, you're welcome to the microphone. Hearing, nope, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, Mick. Go ahead.
Mickey Weiss, eighteen-two-hundred, Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I just want to take a moment to thank Eric and our very small committee of five who put together our fiftieth annual Santa Parade. We had a large group of volunteers from schools, churches. We could not do this parade, I'm gonna get emotional, um, without the help of all these people. It's a lot of work, and I'm so proud of everyone that participated. We were able to bring in the high school. We were able to bring in more bands. We had businesses that have never participated before. Um, I'm sure the fifty-first Santa Parade will be even better. Thanks to the Jacksons for being our grand marshals. It was a wonderful community parade, and it was fun to see our residents and people get involved. This is your parade. We just guided. So, thank you, and Jake, thank you for all the years we steal power from his office space. And for anyone else, Jeff, your people are amazing. We can't do it without streets. And thank you, Dan, for, um, the Shriners. We enjoyed having you. But I just want to say thankful, how thankful and grateful I am to everyone who helped us. Um, it's a big undertaking, and if you're interested, I'm gonna pull one of his cards. If you're interested in the fifty-first annual Santa Parade, please go on the mountclemensantaparade.com and sign up for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, at this time, who would like to address the commission? Okay, seeing.
Can I address a little more time?
It's okay. You didn't use all your three minutes, so, yeah, that's fine. It's okay.
Uh, Summer, Paris Chaffey, one fifteen South Main Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan, four eight, four eight oh four three. Yes, uh, it could be a future problem if the rents keep going higher and higher and people can't afford them. Lot of people, one paycheck way being on the street, it will add to the problem to the city and other cities. Uh, in New York City, apartments are three, three thousand. There's seventy-five thousand in New York City and, and L.A. and all over the place. That's, that's gonna be a big problem. If it gets worse or down here, if the rents go higher, they, uh, the landlord should have a, a, a cut in how much he can raise the rent for their income, the people who wanna rent them.
Thank you, thank you.
Because I feel sorry for those people too, because that's not good.
Thank you, Summer. Okay, we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions. I don't see anything listed. Mr. Shipman, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move to approval of minutes.
Do we to approve the minutes as presented?
Support.
Questions or comments of the minutes? Call the roll.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, nine A, general business, forty-one B, district court budget. Will entertain a motion?
Move to approve the forty-one B District Court twenty-twenty-six budget as presented.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Shipman.
Submitted for your approval is the two thousand twenty-six budget for the forty-one B District Court. I thought the court administrator would be here, but it looks like we have Judge Feminino and Judge Lucido here. And they'll be here to answer your questions, uh, from the commission tonight. Please note that the court operates on a calendar year while the city operates on a July one to June thirtieth fiscal year. The forty-one B District Court serves Mount Clemens, Clinton Township, and Harrison Township. Each community consolidated their individual courts in the late nineteen nineties. Together, they fund the court through a written agreement between the communities. The agreement spells out the funding formula and the responsibilities of the three communities. One of those responsibilities is to pass a budget. That's done by the governing body of each community, and they must have it submitted to the state court administrator's office by December thirty-first of each year. Attached is the proposed budget for two thousand twenty-six. You will notice that there is a significant deficit without a contribution from each of the communities. In the early two thousands, the communities bonded and built the current court building located on Grossbeck Highway. Due to a continued decrease in revenue and debt service requirements, a budget shortfall of seven-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand is expected for two thousand twenty-six. This is largely due to the bond payments of the building. The next six years are the largest debt service requirements of roughly one million due each year. The city's portion of the two thousand twenty-six shortfall is one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Last year, the city's portion of the debt was a hundred-and-four-thousand-six-fifty. Hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars was allocated in the F Y twenty-six budget for the anticipated court payment. The chargeback is distributed among the control units according to the same formula used to distribute excess revenues in the past. That is based on a rolling five-years caseload average. Mount Clemens caseload share is currently fourteen percent of the total. In the history of the consolidated court, this is the fourth year it has been necessary to ask the funding communities to contribute.
Okay, do you wanna bring forward? Do you guys wanna come forward? Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Judge Sebastian Lucido. I'm here with my colleague, Judge Jake Feminino, and our finance director, Dale K. We submitted the budget in advance. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to review it. We're requesting that you pass our two thousand twenty-six budget, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, okay, Commissioner Calhoun.
Um, I don't have a question, but, um, just a statement. It looks like the, um, the Michigan Judicial Council actually just came out with, um, some recommendations for changing the structure of funding trial courts. And so I just think, uh, that the legislature seems to be on a bipartisan basis, looking at taking care of this issue, and hopefully there will be a time where we don't have to do it this way.
Yeah, there's, there's reform coming. The legislature has to approve it. They're trying to work out a formula for the whole state as to how much each community is gonna have to contribute, and that's not easy to do because there's so many different states and different locations that have different budgets. But I, I wanna say one thing, I guess, with regard to the budget. And I wanna make sure the board understands this and the residents understand this. For a long time, we returned money to our funding units, to the tune of quite a bit of money. And COVID came, our caseloads went down, and we went into the red. It has nothing to do with the management of the court. Our revenue is one-hundred percent determined by the cases that come in front of us. So it's the tickets that the police officers write, the misdemeanors, fines, and costs that we collect. So we're at the mercy of our caseload with regard to our revenue. So I just, there was an article, and I wanna make sure that they understand. It has nothing to do with the management of the court. We actually cut quite a few positions to try to stay in the black. But with our revenue cut forty percent, we just couldn't do it. So.
I do have a question you may, may or may not know. So I do see that every community had a spike after, uh, in caseload, uh, going twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. And I noticed that Mount Clemens spike was a bit bigger than the other two communities. Is there anything in particular that you'd attribute that to, or is it just?
I can tell you this. I'm constantly talking to, uh, Sheriff Wicker Sham, to the chief of police in, uh, Clinton Township, trying to encourage them to get those caseloads back to where they were. Because there's not less people speeding. There's not less crime. It's just there's less people getting written and arrested for it. And, uh, so we would love to see our caseload back to where it was, but it's, 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 we can only deal with the cases that are brought to us by the police department.
Well, my, my question's more, it looks like Mount Clemens increased rather significantly its caseload compared to Harrison Township, which just went up a little bit, and Clinton Township had kind of a modest increase, but Mount Clemens had a fairly significant increase in caseload. And I'm curious what the disparity was there, if you know.
Yeah, I don't know why there was that little spike, to be honest.
Just figured I'd ask. Also, uh, I would like to specifically say I appreciate that this was budgeted for with some pretty close estimates on what it ended up costing. It's reassuring when budget estimates meet expenses. Thank you to you and the staff and the number crunchers who got us a pretty, pretty close number.
I have a question more out of curiosity than whether or not, you know, how it affects us voting on the budget. But you compared the expenses of salaries and so on of the court to the caseloads. And so is it the number of caseloads or is it the mix of caseloads that is significantly decreased?
So I believe, and Dale could give you, if you go on, specific numbers. He's better at it than I am. But our, our tickets went down. We were thinking it was somewhere between thirty-five and forty percent since COVID. And, uh, the misdemeanors went down, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent. So that's a huge cut in our revenue.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we made cuts. We made significant cuts. We, at one point, we had fifty-three positions. Now we're down to forty-one positions. We are, I believe, asking for, to add one position back in this budget. So we did all the cutting we could. We're trying to be as efficient as we can. It wasn't just staff that we cut. We, we tried to cut everything. We raised the fines and costs of the tickets a little bit. And, and it's not just about the tickets. The tickets is a public safety issue, too. If they're not writing tickets, believe me, there's more fatalities. And, and so, uh, we would like to see our numbers get back to where they were, but like I said, we, we don't control that.
It's an interesting phenomena here from other, uh, policing agencies that they're just not writing as many tickets. And I'm, I don't understand that phenomena, but.
Yeah.
And the SEMCOG data, um, for the region, for the seven counties, it, the traffic fatalities and traffic incidences has been ticking up pretty significantly for the past five years. And so, um, they're doing a, a drive safely campaign, um, but it just, yeah, it's, it's definitely, um, something that is a public safety issue more so than just revenue. So.
Yeah, these two things shouldn't be connected. I don't think anyone wants that, and, um, yeah, but it, it would make sense for, from a public safety standpoint. But, um, actually trustee Matusik in Clinton Township said it best that, you know, we shouldn't, the system shouldn't depend on us writing more tickets for people just to, so that you can have the staff that you need. That's, that's not right at all, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, Nancy will come up with a great plan and, and everything will be funded in a sensible way.
I think we talked about that last year.
Yeah.
Right? It's good that it's some momentum in that direction in the positive way, so. All right, is there any other questions or comments? All right.
Appreciate your willingness to answer questions.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Thank you for what you and your staff do.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations on your elections, by the way.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, general business, nine B. Oh, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. General, nine B, Consumer Energy License Agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the license agreement between Consumers Energy and the city for the use of the city-owned parking lot located at one-three-five North River Road.
Smart.
Okay, Mr. Shipman.
Consumers Energy has formally approached the city with a request to lease a city-owned parking area located at one-thirty-five North River Road for use as a temporary lay-down yard to support gas infrastructure upgrades in Mount Clemens and the surrounding region. The proposed use would include parking for construction and personal vehicles, placement of an office trailer, and staging for construction materials and aggregates. Consumers Energy will provide twenty-four-seven onsite security and will coordinate closely with the city to maintain a clean, orderly, and safe work environment throughout the duration of the lease. The proposed agreement would run from December first, two thousand twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, with Consumers Energy providing a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-four-thousand dollars in lease revenue to the city during this period. The company would also have the option to extend the agreement on a month-to-month basis for eight thousand dollars per month thereafter. Currently, this lot is utilized only by the farmer's market one day per week, May through November. While the farmer's market has expressed a preference to remain in its current location, administration believes that relocating the market to the RoscoP lot presents a meaningful opportunity for both the market and the community. The RoscoP lot provides greater visibility, improved access, and a closer connection to our downtown businesses, enabling the market and local merchants to mutually benefit from the increased foot traffic. The D D A and business owners have expressed interest in seeing the market integrated more directly into the downtown district. In addition to the economic development advantages, the proposed lease revenue would provide a critical and consistent funding source for future repairs or improvements needed at one-thirty-five North River Road. The lot will require significant work in the coming years, and the revenue generated through this agreement will help offset those costs. The city has also been approached previously by other entities seeking to lease the lot for similar purposes, indicating that this property may continue to generate interest from Consumers Energy and other utility partners moving forward. For these reasons, staff recommend that the city commission approve the attached license agreement with Consumers Energy. This partnership will support essential regional infrastructure upgrades, generate meaningful revenue for the city, and advance long-term goals for downtown vitality.
All right, who has questions?
This seems like a pretty good idea to me. I mean, to make this kind of money and.
The, I guess the only question is the farmers. Have we talked to them yet?
So, just so you know, that I got the call for this Wednesday, right, from consumers. So I have talked to the market about this in April, and because.
Not about this agreement.
Not about this agreement, but about moving to the downtown because we thought we were gonna have to move them anyways for the G L W A connection project, because we were gonna use the lot for the very same purpose for the project. So, and then I believe, I mean, they knew that that's something that the city was interested in, the D D A was interested in. It sounded like they'd been reached out to before. So they would like to stay where they're at. They don't wanna change anything. They'd rather stay over in the one-thirty-five North River lot. But they understood that because of the project that, you know, they probably have to move. And I said, well, look at, this is a great opportunity to see if this would work out like everybody thinks it would. We got to move you anyways. Let's go see if it works. If everybody likes it, then it's a great thing. If not, we could always move you back, you know? And, um, and they had suggested that they'd been moved before, but it'd been, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five years ago or more, you know? So, um, so I did have this conversation with them, um, you know, at the time. And at the time, we didn't have a choice. We, we thought we were gonna have to use that. And then since, uh, we found a different location that's actually better for the contractor, so.
I have a question. Um, I really do like the idea of the farmer's market being more visible and more central. That's a really good idea. But I was wondering, are there any, um, expenses that the city would incur to prepare this, the lot for, um, consumers? I mean, is there anything they're asking us to do on the front end?
No.
And also, would we be interested in some kind of a privacy? Or would they do that, do a privacy coordinating of the, because it will, it will be kind of unsightly.
Yeah, so.
You know, so how do we manage to handle that?
So the lot, of course, has got privacy fence on three sides, so it would just be the North River roadside.
Right, the front.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I, we didn't discuss that. That's obviously something I, I could discuss with them.
Okay.
Um, I love the idea. I have concerns about voting on something that we haven't brought the stakeholders together to understand. I think I understood the conversation before with the market about moving them for the other project. And I would be, I wouldn't wanna try to represent what they said their concerns were. Like, I'd rather hear from them, but there were real concerns and real barriers, what they envisioned, whether it's the number of trucks or how they would, you know, put up tents, or I'm trying to remember. But I don't wanna speak for them. And would we, how would we support them to make that move easier? Because they feel they have, people know to come there to the market, so they would need to help. That we, we all could support the idea that they're in a new location. And is there real urgency to voting on this tonight without having talked to the people who think that that is their home spot?
Yeah, so I'll start at the beginning of your question. So when we discussed this before, they had some concerns whether they would fit in RoscoP lot. So I know Jeff, along with A W., looked at a market day, which, you know, full busy market day, and looked up the footprint that they take up, not only with the market people and the configuration and the parking. And, and they actually drew it and showed where they absolutely have no problem fitting.
Did you come up with the same number they gave us, which was five hundred cars?
I don't, I don't know what the numbers were.
That's a lot. So, I mean, I just wanna make sure, like, we're not talking about something that they have very different numbers for.
Yeah.
Although I appreciate taking the time to do that.
Cars coming and going, but if we look at the footprint and we look at the footprint of what the market takes up and we look at the footprint of the parking, we have more space in the RoscoP than they had there. So that was the first question, is what would they fit?
Okay.
You know, and so, you know, and then, you know, the, the market lot is completely wide open where you have some obstacles with the RoscoP lot in different areas. So they, that's why, one of the reasons we looked at that. And so my thought was what we would do, beginning immediately, is put up almost a billboard-sized sign over in the market street lot saying that, you know, the market will be moving and given a location and showing a site map, obviously, social media, website, those types of things. And then putting up another sign in the RoscoP lot, similar, saying that, you know, beginning on the state farmer's market will be located.
It's great.
You know, in this lot, along, again, with the, the posts and everything. So, um, this is something that, at the very latest, could possibly wait, you know, another week or two. Um, so when, you know.
Day, December first.
That's when the agreement would start. That's what we put in there. And I asked him, I said, well, you know, this is something we haven't discussed. So, you know, if this took a week or two, I said, they might approve it and they might want some other conditions met. You know, if this is something I can pull together in a week or two. And he said, well, as long as you, you could guarantee me that this would, would happen, yes, we could wait, you know, a couple of weeks, so.
Does a dollar ride work, run on Saturdays? And I'm asking because I know it was easier for the seniors at, um, the north of a road. They were right next door. So, do they run on Saturday? No?
We did get SMART. Uh, Henry Ford worked out something with SMART to get them to go to some senior sites, like a HEPA down on Cracker, and bring them on Saturdays. So tried to encourage them to look at areas where people needed transportation in order to visit the market and shop at the market. So I would think that could still, that would be something we could build on. I know the health department is really working on transportation to the market as one of their high priorities to improve access.
Jeff, we're not running to the market. Are we running to the, we're not doing Saturday runs to the market, are we?
To the, no. Saturday, we do the senior shopper.
Right.
And so we pick up at those two, uh, locations, Clint Place and Park Place.
Right.
And run to, um, I think on Saturday, we go to Walmart and Mike, I think. Or.
Yeah, the health department was talking to them about, you know, advertising what vegetables are on sale at Aldi and then stopping there and really trying to increase the accessibility of fresh fruits and vegetables along their stops. One of the projects they're working on. I didn't mean to hijack your question, but were you thinking, like, could we get people to the market when it moves to the RoscoP place? Yeah, because they have, there's the project Fresh Cupids, um, that they give the seniors, and that's just convenient. But we will have time to work out some transportation for them just on that Saturday, if Dollar Ride isn't operating.
Another thought I had, too, is that maybe we could use, I mean, some of this to, um, provide, uh, porta-johns in that area, too, because, so that they have, um, so they have access to restrooms and, you know, or we have to, or have an agreement with the Ant and Art Center, maybe, um, so that they have, you know, restrooms.
I don't think they're gonna jump for joy at this because they don't want to change.
Right.
But I, as a commissioner, I would wanna understand if their concerns sounded like things we could help overcome or whether they're, you know, whether they're gonna just be barriers that build on them, you know, that start a bad relationship.
Yeah, and so I did offer, because right now they pay about two thousand a year, that they could move to downtown for free. I wouldn't charge them. You know, and that'd be a long-term agreement if they wanted it, because I feel like this is a mutually beneficial thing. And this is, these partnerships that we talk about constantly, right, where I think we can. These partnerships that we talk about constantly, right, where I think we can help each other, so yeah, I'll do whatever's, you know, within my ability to. To help them make that move because we want them to be successful, their success is our success, right, so.
And we also want to let them know too that they'll, they will be an entity that's in our downtown footprint. And so then the DDA can partner with them, we can help with, if, you know, they have their soup day, we can promote it, we can. We can help with the running of that, I mean, we can make it even, maybe something bigger, right? We hear constantly on our surveys and everything else that people want Farm City Week back, well, we will have a farmer's market now in downtown. I mean, that would be something that, you know, we could then maybe tie to it, I mean, so. We know that, we do believe that there would be heavy community support for that move. Um, and for having it connected to the downtown, I don't, even though it's, I mean, it's obviously still in our city and at, on North River Road, but I think. That disconnect between downtown and the market is something significant that the community feels and it would be, I think that would be well received.
Yeah, I just personally don't like the per, the perception there could be that we voted on something without a conversation with them. Even though we, we had one similar month ago.
Sure.
They were going to have to move regardless because there would be equipment there and that had already been.
For the project, we had that as our lay-down area for the GLWA connection project.
When was that planning to, when were you planning to, they were gonna have to move downtown for this year?
Yeah, yeah, and possibly two years.
So they were already prepared to not be in that lot?
Well, then it changed and I let them know, hey, we don't have to take that lot, I'd still like you downtown and they said, well, we'd rather stay here, I said, well, okay, you can stay, I said, but this conversation. Is going to come up again because we should talk about it. And the other thing is we still have a lot that we can't do anything with, you can't build anything on it, it's on a landfill. That lot is gonna need, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars put into it very quickly and so.
Because of concrete.
Well, yeah, it needs to be resurfaced, I mean, it's getting bad and I worry about that with the market being down there with, you know, seniors and people walking and, you know, so.
And one other thing too, um, and not that this has, but the DDA board, when we did our strategic plan for the past since two thousand twenty-one. It has had, right Brian, I'm not misspeaking, twenty-one? Yeah, it has had, um, about something in the strategic plan, one of our goals was to try to. Entice the farmer's market down, back downtown, so, um, it was something that our board is, is also very supportive of. Wanting and then having that collaboration with them, they believe that the economic, um, that, that's a significant economic driver for downtown. Very successful downtowns have very successful markets.
Economically, it doesn't make any sense really not to do this, it's just, it's kind of a given.
Like I said, for me, it's the perception of not having a conversation with them before we vote on it. I mean, maybe we don't owe them that, but I still think we could take the time to do that.
Have a question that is, uh. So, uh, item four, condition of the licensed area, so they agree to return it in the condition that it's in. I know it's not in great condition now, but if it gets turned into a lay-down area, I know the condition's going to get significantly worse. How much flexibility or, what, what is that gonna look like? As far as like, okay, they're done, we've got a bunch of giant potholes now. They fill them, patch them, what, what, what is that? How does that get, what's the end result when they pull out, gonna look like?
Well, obviously, we survey and take pictures and what have you and then depending on the shape, I mean, I defer to Rob on the language, but. You're right, section four addresses that, so, um, I mean, if there's a pothole there that wasn't there, then it's gotta be passed in and filled, right?
You know, I just kinda, ironically, uh, I had a consumer's issue myself with our driveway, uh, during an ice storm up north and, uh. Uh, frankly, uh, I sent them an email on a Thursday afternoon and they had their team out there on Friday. And really, um, proposed a plan to, to fix what they damaged. It was just my one experience, but, uh, other municipalities have dealt with them, I've had pretty good experience, I. I think, uh, if Mr. Shipman's gonna take pictures, like he said, um, I think that we could hold their feet to the fire if they damaged the, the parking lot.
Also of taking payment in lieu of reconstruction so that we can roll that money into our actual. Resurfacing of it?
Absolutely yes on that.
I don't know whether that'll make sense or not, but I, I just wanted to confirm if that was going to be an option.
They, they have a, a separate adjuster when there's damage in a property they use and they come up with a value. You can either accept the check or have their team come out, which they subcontract to a black top specialist, so it's one or the other.
And at some point, I mean, if you decide to do this, then we'll let it be known to the utility companies that this is available right now, we. We were approached, I wanna say it was probably. Two years ago, maybe, I think it was Capin. They were in the area doing tree trimming for DTE. You know, and then obviously DT is another one, the cable companies whenever they get a, a big project, so.
So what you're telling me is we can get a hundred thousand dollars a year from this?
Well, I mean, I, oh, I can't, I can't guarantee you that, I know consumers, you know, will probably. Have something going on every few years and they're gonna wanna, that's a good location for them, it's got. It's got the space, they've got access to, you know, the freeway as well as grass it and. You know, what I like about the utility companies is they, they're used to dealing in communities, they, they're a partner, right, they're not. You deal with, you know, if it's a private contractor, I think they're just a lot less trouble and they do the, a lot better job of. Right, they still have to follow all of our ordinances for hours of operation, they can't be over there doing things all night and day, right? I mean, there's, there's hours of operation they have to follow and, and they're gonna provide that twenty-four seven security over there, so.
So. How does, can someone propose that we? Put this aside until that conversation or do we have to vote on it first or?
Kathy, who made the motion?
Uh, Commissioner Rick.
So Commissioner Rick can amend his emotion to table.
I would rather, if you wanna have a conversation, invite them to, uh, I guess we could have a work session if we're not gonna vote anything or a special meeting if you wanted to vote on something.
So what happens if they're against it?
Well, they're, they're not gonna wanna move, I can tell you that because I said before.
I mean, I don't expect them to, to be in favor of it, but as part of the commission, of, of the commission, I'd like to understand. What their objections are, so we know what we're moving into.
So could we, could we have, like you're saying, a work session at our, before our next meeting, I don't know what you have scheduled, do you have something scheduled already?
My thought was you got two choices, you can pass this tonight. Right, with, you know, um, the attachment to it that you wanna hear from them at a work session. You know, and if something at that work session makes you change your mind, then we don't, you know, you can put it in the motion that we. Don't have to go through with this or we can have a special meeting. And then you could vote on this at the special meeting, but I would, I would say we should. I don't know if, I just don't, I'd rather not push it that far, if we can do something sooner, I'll make myself available.
Well, I was thinking that we could, if, if the commission voted tonight and then, and we put in that motion or. Have an understanding, the board have an understanding that we, very soon, we. The administration contact the farmer's market representation, the board of their, um, organization. And then have them come in as soon as they feel comfortable, right, because they may not be available in the middle of December, I mean, it's so busy for everybody. But have them come in as soon as possible to try to work out the, I don't know that this board, I mean. It's not that we wanna create, we don't wanna create, create an adversarial relationship by any means. But we wanna make this as great of a move as possible for them, right, and present all, this as a very positive thing. Because it has the potential of being a very positive thing, so I see what you're saying Jill, but I, I'm, I'm wondering if we present it to them and not a, if they're moving. But how can we move forward?
That's okay too.
Okay.
As long as.
Yeah.
The perception is that we're supportive of what they have to go through. And it could even be the city manager reporting back to us after his conversation, we don't.
I, I would like them to come in to a work session if they could quite honestly, but if they feel it's not necessary, then of course I'm not gonna force them into that.
Or maybe it's just a, I mean, you have a relationship with them, maybe it's a relation, maybe it's a meeting with the two of you. Um, from the SNAP benefit conversations, I mean, maybe it's, you know, that kind of thing and you can convey our, or, and a member of the DDA or whatever, you know, I mean. Maybe it's a small group.
At least we give them the opportunity to have that voice. And if they can't or choose not to, it's not that we didn't wanna hear from them and there's still time. But we feel that from the city's perspective, this is a good move?
That's sort of on the same page for tonight. For what Commissioner Rick mentioned with, um, the condition and for what Commissioner Brown mentioned, potentially. Um, additional fencing, uh, is that a conversation that could, that should happen before we vote on the contract or would that be in a, an addition?
If you're dead set, um, you have to have that fencing in there, then you can make the motion say that he would pass it with the addition of fencing. I don't know that they're gonna do that or not do that because we didn't have that discussion.
But the other, the other part is, is in there, the, the thing I was asking about, it's in there. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that language meant what I thought it meant.
Could we have, could we have a, uh, uh, maybe to address that? Because since the, the front of the lot is, has a lot of natural screening, right, it has the barn, it has. Um, some signage, it has, I mean, some things in it, it's not like a completely open front. Or facade, I guess you would say, of that, of that lot. Could we have a caveat that said, um, they couldn't have, uh, construction materials within the first ten feet of the. Driveways or the whatever, I mean, so that way it, it doesn't lend itself to being right at the street.
Is the barn gonna stay?
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Who does it belong to? I don't know, I feel like that was.
I had the conversation before, but I. I'd be amiss at recalling who said what. The barn doors is the city.
And yeah, I mean, we could put the aggregate, whatever the materials at the back. And what they do is they, they pick up their work vehicle and they leave their personal vehicles there, so the personal, there'd always be vehicles parked. Towards, you know, the front of the lot.
Sensible lay down metal won't look.
Because I don't know that we want fencing, like, because if, if we're not gonna. If, if that's not what it's gonna be used for all the ti, uh, we don't know, right, I mean, since this is the first go at it. I don't know. But I can see your concern, Commissioner Brown, like, we're, you know, you want, you don't want it to be unsightly.
Right, and judging from the list of items that they say will be in there or that are here, it could be unsightly, that's what's my concern. And, you know, it's a nice road, it's a nice drive and you don't want it to look. Add something that, or suggest we add something that would give us an opportunity to. Have something to say about how it looks from North River Road.
Would you, uh, uh, maybe consider adding to the motion that authorize the city manager to, um. Work on an aesthetic plan with consumers to address the concerns raised by the commission at the meeting tonight? And ask them what they've done in other communities, uh, so that we don't have all these materials up by our scenic road there. And then, uh, I think they could present something along those lines.
I think that's a good idea because aesthetic is the key word.
Yeah, because I don't want like, snow fencing, I mean, that would be more unsightly than, you know, but that might be a solution.
Construction fencing is unsightly, yeah, but some aesthetic plan.
Yeah, yeah, maybe it's barbed wire. Make sure they're the right height.
Well, what are we voting on? Have that at Commissioner Rick.
Yeah, I was gonna say Commissioner Rick, would you like to, uh?
Well, at this point, the. The city manager still has the authority to negotiate the contract, correct? And coordinating the aesthetic plan, I don't know that that needs to be part of the motion so much as a directive to the city manager and staff, does that sound right? Well, if it's, if it's a negotiation between them. What's, what's being contracted is they'll talk to each other. I, I, I don't, I mean, I'm not a contract guy, but is. The aesthetic plan? Being in the contract? A meaningful change?
My only thought is it doesn't maybe have to be in the contract, but you're providing the city manager with some leverage if you say in your motion. He has to come up with something aesthetically so he can tell consumers, hey, I have it signed, if you can meet some conditions here, and that kind of puts pressure on them.
Understood, okay.
So, so moved?
Yeah, so moved.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, alright, Kathy's got it.
Glad you do.
And, do you support the, the, okay. Alright, now, does, is it clear as mud on what you're voting on? Alright.
Sure, uh, my, the motion is to approve the license agreement between Consumers Energy, Energy and the city for use of the city-owned parking lot located at one thirty-five North River Road. And authorize the city manager to work on an aesthetic plan addressing the concerns of the city commission. That should be with Consumers Energy, correct? Uh, address the aesthetic plan.
With consumers, okay.
Perfect.
Alright.
Alright, excellent, well, do we have any questions on the proposed motion?
So it's just an understanding that we have from this conversation, that will go back to the farm market board for input. Thank you, it's on tape.
Definitely. Okay, uh, call the rule, please. Yes.
McGarryty.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
York.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Motion passes and thank you everyone for your input, I think that was a really good discussion. Moving to nine C Beautification Advisory Committee Membership Resolution. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution to add members to the beautification committee as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman.
The Mount Clemens Beautification Committee was established in two thousand with an authorized membership of thirteen members. In the years that followed, the city experienced difficulty recruiting and retaining sufficient volunteers to fill all positions. To reflect the reduced interest at that time, the commission adopted a resolution in two thousand seven. Decreasing the committee's membership from thirteen to nine members. As recruitment challenges continued, an additional adjustment was made in two thousand nine to reduce the membership further to seven members. I am pleased to report that community interest in serving on the beautification committee has increased significantly in recent years. The committee has seen a marked rise in applications and has expressed strong support for expanding its membership to better accommodate resident participation. And broaden its capacity to carry out its mission. The resolution before you proposes to increase the allowable membership of the beautification committee to a maximum of fourteen members. Importantly, the resolution is drafted to permit flexibility in membership size, allowing the committee to operate with fewer than fourteen members if needed. This approach ensures that adjustments can be made as interest levels fluctuate without requiring future amendments to the ordinance or additional commission action. And so I guess Commissioner Rick's plea, for people to join our boards and committees is working.
I think, um, the beautification committee has significantly changed what their mission is in the last few years and I think because of that, they've become. Really active in the community and more visible, um, and so they've attracted more members. And when they would come to me with more members or we would get more members, um, um, applications. I tried to explain to them, you know, you can have volunteers that aren't necessarily voting members, but it's really difficult, I think, to have a committee that. Some members can vote and some members can't, and then you, I think they didn't wanna establish like a hierarchy of volunteerism and all this, so. Um, this was the solution, um, that we presented, so obviously a very good problem to have, it's kind of exciting, yeah, yeah.
Are there other committees having this issue with too many members or in some cases too few that are of an advisory nature or the?
There are definitely committees that are more popular than others. Like the DDA, we always have more people who apply than we have seats. Planning is one that is often, um, very popular, so, I mean, we, you know, we, we, so sometimes. So, I mean, we, you know, we, we, so sometimes.
Kind of language be helpful to any other commissions, I guess, uh committees is what I was asking.
I mean, I I think some of them, yeah, some of them, yes, some of them, no. Like, I think some of them are more um legal boards, uh so maybe not. Right, where they can't change the membership, um but these committees, yes. Like historical committee, you know, um something like that, right, exactly where they're not doing work that has legal parameters. So, yeah. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, call the rule, please.
McGarrettie.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes, okay, motion passes and we will move to purchases and payments.
Move to approve purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman, there's no cover letter. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm gonna try to get it out.
Yeah.
So we didn't use them in twenty twenty-four at all. Why do we need this?
This is for using emergency service.
So up till through twenty-four, we had another contract or something that if we needed it?
We didn't have a need for their service, which is a good thing.
Absolutely, but we don't know that we need it in twenty-five either, right?
Well, I know when we need it, they better be there.
But my point being.
I'm missing your point.
So the point being, did we have a contract through twenty twenty-four or up till now if we needed them? Because now we're just having a contract put in place in case we need them?
Well, no, they, it just would be an extension.
It's extension of what their current arrangement is. Okay. It says consistently extended this contract with water tap since twenty thirteen, so we've had a contract with them all this time. Part of the reason why you felt there or it was decided there wasn't a a need to bid for this?
Well, number one, there's not many that do it. And then this, they're close because this is, hey, I need you here now. Right, so you want somebody that's close and reliable and they've proven that. And they've held pricing for quite a long time. And again, it's not something we use every day. This isn't a large expense, but, you know, if we get a main break and we can't shut it down, then we may need the service.
So it's like a safety net if we need them? And the last time we needed them was in twenty twenty-three?
It's my understanding, yes.
And it was six thousand dollars?
Given that they're the only one within five hours, and pretty soon we're going to have to consider the fact that this, if there's a water main break, it's not even gonna be our water anymore, which is a lot more expensive to pay for.
Shut off as quickly as possible. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments about payments and purchases and payments? Call the rule, please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor. Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Call the rule, please.
Yor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrettie.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we will move to the city manager's report. Mr. Shipman.
City staff attended the first annual Macomb County Housing Summit on Monday, November seventeenth at Macomb Community College. The summit focused on presenting the results of the recently completed Community and Housing Needs Assessment, which is a comprehensive study of housing in the county. Attendees participated in discussions about the assessment findings and explored recommendations for action to guide the future of housing in Macomb County. Curbside compost pickup season is scheduled to end on Friday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Compost pickup will resume the first week of April in two thousand twenty-six. Holiday parking is free after three P M. through January first and is always free on Saturdays and Sundays. Please visit one of our many fine downtown stores for your Christmas shopping needs. And the tinsel tour trees will be up on December first, which they are up today. They'll be up through January seventh in the newly renovated Cherry Street Mall. Decor- decorating of the trees will begin on Wednesday, December third. So please take a stroll through the spectacular array of decorated Christmas trees and visit downtown for a great Christmas experience. Two thousand twenty-five winter taxes are due and payable starting Monday, December first, two thousand twenty-five, and they can be paid through Monday, March second, two thousand twenty-six without penalty. On March third, two thousand twenty-six, all delinquent two thousand twenty-five taxes will be turned over to the Macomb County Treasurer's Office for collection. And I want to congratulate uh former Commissioner Glenn Borhees for being the first one to pay again today for the twenty-five or thirty years running, whatever it is. So congratulations, Glenn. Over recreation, we have the Second Annual Daddy Daughter Dance, December sixth, at the Carnes Community Center. This year's theme is I love you to the moon and back. We have Senior Bingo on December eighth at Carnes Community Center. So enjoy a fun-filled afternoon of bingo, featuring prizes and community connection. Tree decoration creation night, December ninth, also at the Carnes Community Center. Unleash your creativity and make festive decor with friends. And we have the Senior Christmas Party, December nineteenth, Carnes Community Center, featuring joyful music, festive treats, and great company will await you. For more information, check out our new monthly newsletter on Facebook or visit our registration portal. You can find the link on our Facebook page or on the city website under the Recreation tab. Our community events, we have the Downtown Mount Clemens Annual Light Parade, Saturday, December thirteenth at seven P M. And we have the Mount Clemens Kids New Year's Eve Event, that's Wednesday, December thirty-first, from four P M. to nine P M. And we have Kids Fireworks Show at nine P M. on that evening. That's hosted by Discovery Center of Macomb at fifty-four Cherry Street. And of course, we have the Mount Clemens New Year's Eve Event, Wednesday, December thirty-first, starting at ten thirty P M., entertainment and fireworks on Main Street. For information on any of our events, please call five eight six four six nine four one six eight.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Shipman? Okay, then we will move on to the public participation. Again, this is the second opportunity that we um invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. If you'd like to address the commission, come on up.
Now, someone here shared a feature, one fifteen South Main Street, Mount Clemens four eight oh four three. Yes, I noticed there's, there's a lot of bars that the people, when they come out of bars, they're, they're drunk driving. A lot of people drive with one headlight, crack wind chills. And there's no, there's no police to really to to give them a ticket. There's a lot of that stuff going on right now, it's, it's like nobody's doing nothing about it. Drunk driving kills people just as much. And it's, it's bad to drunk drive. Even uh smoking marijuana behind the wheel should be against the law too because you're under the influence of the marijuana. And a lot of people are found smoking in the public's marijuana too. A lot of people don't like it. I don't like marijuana because I lost my mom when I was younger because of marijuana. And I don't like drugs. I do not like drugs at all because they ruin your life. They're not worth it. They're not even worth anything. They may be tax money, but if they were smoking in the house, that's all right and not go out nowhere, that's fine. But those stores that sells that stuff, people do it on the street and they think it's cool. And around the influence of eating that candy marijuana and the real high, you know, they end up killing somebody. Maybe a family or something. It's very scary out there. It's very, and it causes car insurance go higher too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address this commission at the ti- at this time?
I got the call from you, Mayor.
Wait, can you give us your full name?
Came to here, ninety Kendra Street, Mount Clemens. Joe knows me from school. I just wanted to let you guys know I accepted the position for the beautification committee and I'm a granddaughter of one of the larger rose growers here in Mount Clemens, so it's kind of an honor to be part of this. I was tickled, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move to uh I'll entertain a motion for closed session. Oh, I will go to cl- I'm getting ahead of myself. Sorry. I would never, no, okay, sorry, we'll move to Commissioner comments and we'll uh go to Commissioner Eric Rick this time.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to uh thank everyone who came out for the Santa Parade and all the volunteers who made it happen. Thank you, everyone, for making it a magical day for children of all ages. Some of the, some of the senior children seemed to have the biggest laughs and that was wonderful, too. I'd like to thank Paul for volunteering to serve on the Planning Commission. And thank you to Pam and Christie for uh serving on the Beautification Advisory Committee. Do appreciate your willingness to serve. Uh I'd like to uh also say, continue to shop local. Lots of unique and interesting treasures are available in downtown Mount Clemens. Check it out, lots of uh great opportunities for that and also opportunities to continue serving our community through service on one of our boards, committees, or commissions. For more information, check mountclemens.gov slash boards or call the city at five eight six four six nine six eight zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Calhoun.
I also, I just wanna uh put a big thank you out to the Santa Parade Committee and specifically Commissioner Rick for the the hard work that it takes to um to to put it on, to get all the volunteers together, um to get all the elected officials to cooperate and stand in line. You've made it a really great event. There were so many people there, the weather cooperated. And so thank you to everyone who was a part of that, uh organizing, volunteering, uh or just coming out to enjoy it. Uh I also want to thank Commissioner Theresa McGarrettie for putting together a Thanksgiving dinner for the community at the Carnes Center. And it was just wonderful. People came in um from all over the community. Some were facing challenges, some came to just help out and serve a meal, some came to just be around people, and it was wonderful. And then she sent people out with meals to go find people who could use a hot meal. Had hand warmers, gifts for people, and so that was just, it's very touching. Just how many people were helped because you had that idea, because you got everyone together. And so thank you so much and thank you for having the community center available uh for us, Coche. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. Commissioner Brown.
Oh, this is gonna sound like an echo chamber, but I feel that I really missed out by not being here for the Santa Parade. I heard really good things and two of my favorite people were involved. But again, kudos to Eric for a great job. I'll be there next year as long as I get that date early enough because I had an all-day retreat. And also, I have to say that um the magnanimity of Theresa McGarrett this uh Thanksgiving season was um just heartwarming. I wasn't able to help serve, but I did drop off a donation and I just think we can't do enough during this season of giving to help uh those who need a hand up and need a meal or whatever. So I hope that will become an annual thing and I will definitely, again, be cleared of my calendar so that I can participate wholly next year. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Well, I know it's, I know it's been said many times, many ways, but thank you to all of the I'd sing it, but it would be bad. That would just totally ruin the whole thing. But um as long as I don't cough and I'm not contagious, I have been to the doctor. But um the Santa Parade was wonderful, as we all know. It was a lot of fun and I'm so grateful to the committee for all the hard work because it's obviously an incredible amount of organization and work to do. So thank you so much for continuing this great tradition and we had a wonderful time. And I know I've missed the last two meetings and I apologize for that. I don't do that lightly, but we had a family member who was very ill and then passed away, so it was, it was a difficult time for my family. But I did listen to the last meeting and I know that um Commissioner Calhoun did mention that he and I went on a tour of um a recycling plant and to visit Priority Waste Headquarters. And he didn't say too much more about that, so I'm gonna take this opportunity. But one of the things when we went on that recycling tour, it was really amazing. I mean, on one hand, the automation that's involved, but on the other hand, what people throw in those recycling bins is a little scary sometimes. And when you see this mound of trash, of recycling, that these when we had to go to this place, we get in line to go in with the um garbage trucks and the recycling trucks, priority, you name it, they were all there. And we're in line going in and then they tell me, and I'm driving my son's three fifty pickup truck, and they tell me to get in this spot this big. But I'm over there and, you know, you're going through it, but then you see this mound of stuff. And people recycle everything and anything and don't rinse it out and don't, I mean, it it really gets pretty rough on that first stage of sorting all that stuff out. So all I can, I can say from that is I've become a a recycling, uh what's a good word?
Guru.
Guru, maybe, but advocate of only recycle what they are suggesting, what they tell us we can recycle. Because even if and it's, even if it says on something recyclable, it doesn't mean our recycling plant can process it. For example, Styrofoam, they said, you know, Styrofoam breaks all up and gets in their machines and messes it all up. So Styrofoam is not recyclable. And if you go to the city website, there's a handy-dandy little thing you can print out, it shows what is and what isn't. And um I hope everybody will follow that, right? You know, just because you think it should be recyclable or it says recyclable, it may not be. And please don't recycle your plastic bags. Oh, my God, what they can do to to that place. But it is an amazing tour and I was actually thinking maybe we could do a, uh we were, Commissioner Calhoun and I were talking about it, we could do some kind of even a video of of it and put it on our
I think the two of you should.
But, you know, uh actually show the recycling plant. And um I will just say, and I know there's been a lot of complaining about Priority Waste. They were, they're stage one in this process, but they are trying. I will give them that. They were, they grew very rapidly and they, they have put a lot in place. I mean, they have Command Central there now and we have one person assigned to Mount Clemens who monitors all of our trucks. Each truck has five cameras on it and they are trying. They are watching constantly. So um it was a very worthwhile tour and I I encourage anyone that has the opportunity to visit your, visit one and um but uh I do encourage everyone to please be careful what you recycle. Only do what um you're supposed to do. And that's it. Pardon? We have recycle bins. Those blue.
The blue one.
And if you don't, can't find it, how would you obtain it?
If you call City Hall or you can call the Streets Department.
The Streets Department.
Yep, call the Streets Department and you can get it.
Yes, I think if you lost yours, it's five dollars.
Go ahead, John, what were you gonna say?
But if yours is damaged in some way, we will replace it at no charge.
The ten dollars for a new one, okay, it's good to know for the public, especially after that.
All right, Commissioner McGarrettie.
I really don't have much to say. I'm I'm still um feeling some energy from the Santa Parade. It was, it was just totally awesome and you're right, the weather was perfect, but it could have snowed heavily. It was just seeing the joy. Just like Commissioner Rick said, on every age face, it just felt so good and that energy carried for such a long time. It was um, it was a good experience and it's good to know that you can now go on the website to sign up for twenty already. Okay, Michelle gave that information, so thank you. And that's it, that's, I just. Um, and that's it, that's, I just, I, I, I just, um, I'm still feeling that positive energy from the city. I think that everyone enjoyed that parade, so that's it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Yor.
I'll skip the thanks for the parade, but things like the tree lighting and the Santa Parade really bring people to the downtown area. And I, I know that we're all very conscientious of that, our businesses, you know, will probably never recoup. Um, and so, the more opportunity to bring more people down is, is always a good thing, so thank you for that, I enjoyed both of them. Uh, I appreciate the conversation about the farm market today and recognizing them as stakeholders that we want to hear from them. I, I think that I've heard them say that they want to believe the city values them and. Recognizes what, uh, farm market brings to a city, so I think this conversation will. Provide more of that thought, not that we haven't done that before, but.
Yeah.
That's really what they're, what I took away from my conversations with them, so I'm looking forward to that. And thank you to those who are joining new boards and committees, thank you for speaking up, Pam. And a shout out to Commissioner Calhoun, he was recognized as part of the forty under forty in Macomb County. That was a great celebration put on by our chamber.
Very good.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, I want to recognize, um, the five members of the Santa Parade Committee. Uh, Mickey Weiss, Jim Ketchum, Eric Rick, who is the chair. Uh, Monica Baker, who also happens to be my mom, and, uh, Paul Friedman. Um, did I miss anyone, five, right? Okay. Yeah. Um, I mean, uh, when we think back, that five people started meetings, June? January? Oh, okay, so started, uh, five people started meetings last January and put on a parade that was attended by thousands of people. I've never walked down the str- main street where it was that heavily attended. Um, even in, we've had nice weather parades before, um, there was always, um, areas where it, it wasn't. As heavily populated, right, and I am telling you, from the moment we stepped off. At Church Street, I felt like there were three, four, or five rows deep, um, and it, and it just went all the way. Um, so it was, it was by far the best attended, we're going, we're gonna just say it, right? That it, that, definitely the best attended, so thank you for all your efforts, congratulations on the fiftieth anniversary, and we look forward to the fifty first. The parade is always the Saturday before Thanksgiving, so now you have the date for twenty six. Um, so fifteen, it's been fifteen years, so we can call it always. Um, I wa- I attended the Holiday Craft and Vendor Fair yesterday at Carnes. Um, they had, uh, quite a few vendors in the, in the gym at Carnes, um, I was able to pick up some Christmas gifts. And was able to, um, pick up some corned beef dinner and a corned beef burger, which. If you haven't tried that, was life changing, so RJ's, um, corned beef, I do not reckon, recommend it for a. Daily occurrence, but, um, it was delicious, and I'm not gonna be sad about it. Um, RJ's corned beef is located on Grashit, um, I would, phew, that was good, so. Um, I'm, I'm gonna try to, and I hope that all of you will, I'm gonna try to attract them to downtown Mount Clemens, because that is something we need, so. Um, coffee talk, I will have on Tuesday, uh, December ninth at nine thirty, John's Family Grill. And di- uh, Thursday, December eleventh at six thirty P M., Black Cat Coffee. Um, so if you wanna come and talk about, uh, if you have any concerns, or you wanna talk about what's happening in Mount Clemens. It's a very informal discussion, and we just, um. We all meet, and it's a, it's a really nice, nice time, so. Um, Carl, I was wondering if you could maybe stand up at the microphone for a second, sorry to put you on the spot, but not really. Um. Carl, um, Carl, I know you and a lot of our staff, um, we were able to collect a lot of meals. Um, this, this past, what, about a month, we did it for? About how many do you think we handed out, and what was the?
It was about a hundred and eighty, and we still have food left over. So, we're going to, um, put together, uh, Christmas, uh, dinner contributions. So the, the food drive continues, but just for, for Christmas, but we did a hundred and eighty.
That's excellent, thank you very much for all of your efforts, and to all the staff that helped, I know that Greg and his family helped put, um, meals together, and. Uh, several people, um, Dave hauled all of it all over the city, so Dave Hamilton, thank you for his efforts. Um, there was a lot of people that, um, a lot of our staff contributed, um, so I wanna thank all of them, and. I know it was a very last minute thing that we, since we were reacting to the SNAP benefit program, but thank you for always making sure that we can. React and do things.
Well, thank you to our community, because it was an amazing drive, and how many people that actually put forth food, and then. We had right around twenty volunteers altogether, throughout the whole process, at different times show up, help pack food and, uh, help distribute.
That's awesome.
Hmm.
That's why I love Mount Clemens. Um, I, uh, wanna thank, uh, Roxanne for her service on the planning commission, I know, because she became a commissioner on this board, you had to give that a seat up, so. Uh, welcome to Paul Friedman for stepping into that, and then, of course, Pam and Christie to the beautification advisory committee, so thank you very much for stepping up in those roles. Um, I also want to invite all of our commissioners to participate in the light parade, if you haven't had the opportunity to do that, it is December thirteenth. Which I know the weekends and the holidays are busy, um, but it is such a fun parade, it's very short, it's not a long commitment. Um, we, we take off at seven, we usually organize starting at six, um, in the yellow lot or the new city hall lot. Um, so we're gonna, we will be able to, um, decorate cars there, but you can decorate your car and participate with us in that. Um, in that light parade, it's just really a fun, fun event, and the streets are usually filled with people. And, um, and again, it's another opportunity to support our local businesses when, when we even come to see the parade, so. Um, with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of. Uh, contract negotiations with local eight three international association of firefighters.
May I squeeze in just another little comment?
Of course, we call it a mulligan.
Commissioner Fournier's, uh, comments kind of sparked.
Yeah.
Um, about the recycling. Um, the do's and don'ts, it reminded me of how often I told my mother we had to take the styrofoam out of the recycle bin, and you know, you explain it over and over. But my point is that a lot of seniors, um, which I am a member of that category, but a lot of seniors don't go to the website and look and see. So can we think of other ways to get the word out, because it is very important, there's a mountain of stuff that does not belong there.
Yeah.
And I'm real big on rinsing everything out in my household and doing it right. So I'm just thinking that maybe from time to time, a full page notice in Clemens time.
I wrote a note.
Oh, you got that down there, okay, and also.
Yeah.
I'm a big proponent of maybe considering putting things in with the water bills, just informational pieces for people. Because that, that's just a thing, and that was it, I just wanted to.
Maybe we can ask Priority, what are the top don'ts? Like pizza boxes, right, or plastic bags, you know, those types of things.
Plastic bags.
Are okay if they're not greasy.
Right.
I mean.
But how often are?
Yeah, right, exactly.
They've offered to do a video, so we can, uh, take them up on that, now that we have, you know, our cable channels back, and we can put that on the website as well.
Yeah, the cable channel might be a good one, a lot of seniors saw them, yeah.
Cable has a ton of, um, social media resources, it's called Recycling Raccoons, and they're hilarious, and they.
Oh, okay.
Teach you everything about recycling, I think it's made more so for kids to understand how it works, but, you know, it's good for everybody.
We can all learn, right?
Yeah.
Even from a raccoon.
Great.
Okay, awesome, all right, now I will entertain a motion to.
Go into closed session for discussion regarding contract negotiations with local eight three eight international association of firefighters.
Excellent, anybody have any questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Uh, yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a five minute recess before closed session. All right, we're back.
That's it.
We're back into open session, so I'll entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, uh, and any questions or comments about adjournment? Uh, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Tiny opposed. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.